Good evening. This is the March 14th, 2016 meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Councillor Guanasso?
Here.
Here, Councillor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councillor Keefe.
Here.
Here, Councillor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councillor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councillor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councillor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councillor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councillor Rotundo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino. Here. Quorum is present. Calendar item number one, continued hearing, the petition of Verizon for a pole relocation on Fernwood Ave. Subject matter was tabled on March 7th.
Can you hear me okay? Madam President, before the record, my name's Everett Bryant. I'm a right-of-way engineer with Engineering and Data Solutions, representing Verizon, New England, at 125 High Street in Boston. Our petition this evening is to relocate one existing jointly-owned pole, number 902, approximately six feet in a westerly direction, to accommodate access to the construction site for the new school. That was accomplished at the request of the city.
Thank you. Do any councillors have any questions? Councillor Guanasso?
Mr. Bryant, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Pole number 902, is that near 900?
I would expect it is. I'd have to look at the plan to see if it shows.
I have a resident's been asking for 10 years to get that removed. Could you just tell that to my dear friend over at, who meets with us once a month? Pole 900 on Fernwood Ave. Thank you, Everett.
Councillor Haas?
Matter of fact, the same individual called me up. He liked that resolved.
Thank you. Councillor Keefe?
Same here. Same, same call, and he's been calling for a number of years, so we'd like to get that done.
I will definitely get that message to the engineers.
Everett, please note that I was the one that got it done.
He actually called me as well, so we would appreciate that.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Thank you for coming before us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
So we'll take a roll call on this petition. Shall the City Council approve the petition of Verizon to relocate jointly-owned pole number 902 on Fernwood Avenue, approximately six feet in a westerly direction? Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been approved.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Calendar item number two is the report of the zoning subcommittee. Councillor Haas?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we addressed the FEMA floodplain maps in the city. They have to be, if they're going to be passed, they have to be passed this evening because they're due on the 16th of March. And the subcommittee unanimously approved the floodplain maps. There was a lot of discussion about citizens in the city, as far as the costs, et cetera. But again, they believed the best thing to do was to approve it, as submitted, and have a state delegation, federal delegation, take a more active part in this. So the motion is to accept.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this motion before we vote on it? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll order that on a second reading. Order on a third and final reading.
Opposed.
Roll call on engrossment and ordainment. For the City Council, rules of order, if it's opposed on the second reading, it gets automatically tabled.
Madam President, point of parliamentary procedure?
Yeah.
Motion to rescind.
The floodplain maps.
That would allow us to vote on rescinding the primary vote, and then retake the vote again?
So a roll call?
Correct. We're voting to rescind the vote before we go into the third reading.
Shall the City Council rescind the vote on the second reading relative to the floodplain district? Councillor Guanasso?
No.
No, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the vote on the second reading has been rescinded.
Madam President, point of personal privilege?
State your point, councillor.
My suspicion would be if someone would like not to vote for it, but yet not slow down the process, they can vote present, and it would have no effect on the vote, but it would also allow them to voice their opinion accordingly, although they could vote no on the third reading, if my recollection is correct, and it would still allow them to have their voice of dissension. Would that be correct? Madam Clerk?
Point of information. I spoke my piece at the zoning subcommittee, there's no need for that.
Very well.
Thank you, councillors. Ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call on engrossment and ordainment. Councillor Guanasso?
No.
No, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo?
No.
No, Councillor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the floodplain district zoning amendment has been engrossed and ordained. Councillor Haas, were there any other reports from your committee?
It's the kennel issue. The Revere Planning Board come back with a recommendation that they believe that the definition of kennels should conform to the state itself, so that's one change, and they also have changes to section two and three. They'd like to delete those, and are not in favor of them, two and three. And that was voted out in the subcommittee unanimously. Roll call?
Thank you, councillor.
Madam President, if I might?
Councillor Zambudo?
Thank you. At the risk of being redundant, I made a few comments at the zoning subcommittee, but I'm afraid that not many people watch our subcommittee meetings, and I want to clear up some stuff that's been out there. First of all, I can't really call it a, my colleague is telling me I can call this a minority report, but I voted in favor of the final product, so I'm not going to call it a minority report, because it was a unanimous vote. However, I was asked, as a bit of history, I was asked to lend my expertise to redoing our kennel zoning, because of a serious problem that exists in the city of breeding by gang members, et cetera, of vicious dogs. And we won't be breed-specific, but we all know what vicious dogs are. They can be any breed, but there's a few that are really vicious dogs when they're treated that way. However, in the midst of all this process, I was accused of, and let me state first, that I have no intention, I'm recusing myself from voting for this, because I am a dog breeder. I am a, you know, a dog show enthusiast, and that's what I do, is my hobby. It's called a hobby breeder, legally and above board. So in the midst of this whole thing, we put section two and three in which defined dog kennels, and I believe, now that it's been eliminated, will be, it will be less easy to enforce this ordinance. However, we can still do it, it takes more inspection, and instead of going in, you could simply go in and say, where's your papers for your kennel? Now you're going to have to go a little further and have an inspector do it, and you can't ask for papers. It's a different process. That being said, I felt that we crossed the line here with the decorum. In 16 and a half years on this council, I've never seen a breach of decorum, and I feel it was egregious, it was a personal attack. I take that personally, because everybody knows that my only interest up here is for the citizens and what's best for the city of Revere. I've never told a lie up here, and I'm not a go-along-to-get-along guy, and that's part of the reason, that I would never expect to get a special permit for myself, should I want to have a kennel in a residential section. I would have to get eight votes out of 10 votes. Of course, my vote would not be in there, so there'd be 10 councillors. Does anybody up here really think that I could ever get eight votes for a special permit out of 10? I doubt it. So the bottom line is that I took offense to that, and I had to state it publicly, because I heard from some planning board members that they were told that I put this in for personal use, and that's what this was all about, and hence they struck that section, which I intended to strike after I saw the opposition to it. I intended to strike section two and three anyway, because my goal is to protect the citizens from the illegal dog breeding. That's the goal, that's what the city clerk, the dog officer, that was our goal from the start, and so we don't want to divert from that. And so that's why we eliminated that, but it does make it lesser of a, we can still go under the FODU to go after these people, and, you know, but then it's provided that they're dog, that they're homeowners, which they're probably not, now you're going after the landlord, they're going to have to evict these gang bangers, whoever they got in there that are breeding these dogs illegally, so it complicates it a little bit. Bottom line is, I took offense to the fact that I'm trying to do what's right for the city, and I was attacked personally. And like I said, I heard from the planning board members that they said, they were told that this was done for myself, which is completely false. And anyways, that's all there is to it. I support the ordinance as it is now, with section two and three eliminated, and we go forward from here. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this while it's on the floor? All right. So there is an amendment on the floor, so we have to take a roll call with the deletions of sections two and three. In addition of having, perfect, so the, so as amended. On the amendment to strike sections two and three of the proposed kennel ordinance, Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Recused.
Recused. Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the amendment has passed.
Madam President, on 16/017, 16/029, we haven't received any information from Frank Strangie-Petance, either one, so it's going to stay on the table.
Perfect, so we'll leave those in committee, but I believe we're still on this motion, because it is an ordinance. So this will be ordered on a second reading as amended. Ordered on a third and final reading as amended. Roll call on engrossment and ordainment as amended. Councillor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Zambudo?
Recused.
Council President Janino?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance has been engrossed and ordained as amended. Communications? They're in committee. Calendar item number three, communication from the planning board relative to its recommendations for an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to the floodplain district. So we'll attach that to the packet for the, perfect. Calendar item number four, communication from the planning board relative to its recommendations for an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the city of Revere relative to kennels. We'll also attach that to the motion. Calendar item number five, motion presented by Councillor Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of implementing a tiered water and sewer rate as is utilized in the city of Malden. Councillor Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. One of the major issues within the city is that, unfortunately, if you are a senior citizen, for that matter, someone on a fixed income, you are going to be paying more for your water than you would if it was not in a tiered system. So the more you use, the more you pay, and the less you use, the less you pay, and it's basically shifted accordingly. It works perfectly in Malden, it helps seniors. In fact, my aunt, who lives two streets over from Sherman Street, from where my cousin lives here in Revere, actually pays literally $200 less a year than what they pay here in Revere. And it's a pretty simple formula that they utilize, and if it can work here, that would be great. If it can't, then so be it, but I think it's a very simple thing to look into, and try and help our seniors. I mean, people are getting killed with their water bill, they're going to get killed with their flood insurance, and that's just the way it works. And that's my opinion, and I would hope that people would join with me to help look into this feasibility. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other councillors that wish to speak on this? All right. Oh, Councillor Keefe?
I'll just make it really brief. I couldn't agree more. And I don't know exactly how the entire system would work, so I'd be looking to see, get some information from the mayor's staff on how we could make it work, but this is something that would be very beneficial to the, especially to the people working on fixed incomes.
Thank you, councillor. I think it's a motion that will start a good conversation, and I think that all of us can say that, you know, during the process of working with residents, it's one of the biggest complaints that we all get, so. Councillor Haas?
Thank you. Well, since we're talking about water, I'd like to find out if the city is going to offer a outside water meter with the new system being implemented.
That would have to be a separate motion.
The water. No?
But that's not what's on the floor right now, so that'd be a separate issue, but we can look into that.
Okay, all right. There's already motion.
So on the motion on the floor, anyone else wish to speak? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number six, motion presented by Councillor Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of a 10% homeowner tax credit, as was proposed during the last mayoral election.
This is something that I supported during the last mayoral election. I think it's a great thing, and Chelsea, they're doing this currently. If our economics befit this, I think this is something that we should be doing. That's part and parcel of what I had asked in, I believe it's motion number nine, to kind of find out if there's a feasibility for doing that this year, I'm not sure, but the year after, we should at least start the process. And Chelsea, I believe, through you, Madam President, to the mayor, I think it's 20% that they're offering in Chelsea right now, and Chelsea's finances are obviously far better than Revere's with the free cash in their rainy day fund. I think they've got almost 18 million, I'm told, so obviously, they're doing a little bit better than us at this point, and they're obviously doing a little bit more for their people. This is something that you and I share, Brian, to help our community, so through you, Madam President, to the mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, through you to the councillor. I actually think that Chelsea has recently increased that to 25, maybe 30%. I know there was an increase recently, I think in the last couple of months, so it is something that a number of other communities are doing, Malden, Everett, Chelsea, and the city of Boston, and the city of Somerville also. And they all range from, the 10% is pretty modest compared to what some other communities are doing, 25, 30, 35%.
Madam President, through you to the mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, at this point, my question is, I mean, have we looked at what the percentage of owner-occupied versus what I would call commercial venue properties are in the city? How's that split come? And I'm not holding you to this, because I know it'll probably change, but it's a perusal that you might have made.
We haven't done that yet, and councillor, to your motion a little bit later, we are going through the budget pretty closely, and in the hopes of getting to a place where we can start to maybe offer that 10% tax exemption. So, and I'll speak to the motion that you have coming up a little bit later, but they are one and the same. They're all done kind of with the big picture.
I pardon.
Right, in view, and I think that for us to start doing the work to look into the owner-occupied properties is a little too early. Want to get the budget kind of set, make sure that we're cutting out any unnecessary spending, and then moving forward to think about how we can implement a tax exemption.
Well, you do have your work cut out for you.
I do have my work cut out for me, absolutely. And I'll talk about that work a little bit in the next motion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, councillor, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else wishing to speak on this motion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Councillor Morabito, that the city council write a letter to our state delegation in support of House bills 3110, 3111, 3112, and 3113, all relative to discounting tolls for Revere residents. Councillor Morabito?
Thank you. This bill, basically, it was submitted from, these four bills were submitted by Representative Vincent. All the bills that were submitted were measures to discount the tolls for Revere residents, and for citizens who are 70 years of age or older, it would waive the charge of, for tolls. I ask that we all support this measure.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other councillors that wish to speak on this? Councillor Rotundo?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a great motion to support. Frankly, as a community that is inundated with well over 200,000 vehicles per day, as well as the insult from Massport, whether it be from the traffic going to Massport, or whether it be the planes overhead that causes pollution and increases our rates of cancer. Quite frankly, as far as I'm concerned, any type of assistance that we can give our people for what we suffer through is at a bare minimum necessary and needed, so I applaud Councillor Morabito on this, and I support her wholeheartedly.
Thank you, councillor. Madam Clerk, can we also add Councillor McKenna to that motion? Thank you. I think it's a great motion, and I want to thank Representative Vincent for working to represent our citizens up at the state level. It's really important that her work is, you know, supported by us. So on the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number eight, motion submitted by councillors McKenna and Morabito, that the mayor requests Mass DOT to repair the traffic light sensor on Harris Street. The sensor is not being activated properly when vehicles are waiting at the light and traffic begins to back up into the neighborhood after missed cycles. Councillor McKenna?
I think this motion, thank you, Madam President, I think this motion speaks for itself. I've been stuck at this light three times, a recycle, and the traffic's backing up, so I just feel that there's no, people don't know that they have to hit the sensor with their car, there's no signage, and there's no, the lines faded to go up to the lights, so people don't know that they have to hit the sensors for the light to change. So I just think that we would like to see Mass DOT look at it and repair it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Morabito?
Thank you. This issue has been a nuisance to the residents in that area, especially in the evening, when it gets dark out, because what will happen is, cars will back up all along Harris Street, and the lights on their vehicles, their brake lights disturb the residents, so I think it's an issue that we have to resolve immediately.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Madam President. I've had that experience myself down there. As a matter of fact, every house on Harris Street is in the Ward 5 area, with the exception of two Harris Street, which is the elderly complex down there. It's just one of those things where it's not functioning properly, and I'm going to tomorrow make it a point to also speak to Mark Kratman over at Mass DOT, as well as my colleague here to my left, Councillor Zambudo. All right? And I'm sure that a phone call from him to someone in the district can, yeah, so I think it's an excellent motion, and hopefully that this will be addressed not within weeks, but within a couple of weeks, if that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And Councillor Morabito requested to have Councillor Powers added to that motion. Councillor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, you know, it's a good thought, and I know everybody wants to help the neighbors, but just as a point of information for everybody, they're still working on that intersection. They plan on paving it, hopefully in the month of April, late April. Now, a lot of that has to do with the sensor work on the ground, and they're working on the lights right now as they speak. I was, I saw them yesterday, and I did talk to the project manager, and he said, they have to get everything settled first, to get all the wires together before they do any adjustments to it, because they're going to have to adjust it again anyways. So I'm just giving you a point of information, and, you know, it's not that I'm shooting it down, or that I'll vote against it, you know, but just to let you know where it is. You know, it's all because of the construction.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Rotundo?
To echo Councillor Novoselsky's comments, and the other councillors, the other issue is coming eastbound to westbound on 145, and again, it has to do with the reconfiguration of the whole area. The sensor and controls and the timing need to be adjusted. I mean, about two weeks ago, I sat there, literally for three minutes, before the person in front of me ended up breaking the red light to go, because it never changed. So that's a safety hazard in itself. They need to work on it now in order to ensure that no one gets hurt, regardless of whether they're doing the construction or not, and I get that. But, you know, clearly it needs to be worked on.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna?
A reference to your, what you just said, I put a motion in about four months ago before you got onto the council, that they would, they rechecked that light, because it's backing up all the way down to the skating rink, so, and it hasn't been done yet, so.
Thank you, councillor. Are there any other councillors that wish to speak on this motion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councillor Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to provide the city council with an update on funds remaining in the FY16 budget of the following accounts and what remains in free cash. Further, the update shall include a list of departments that are burning through overtime. Councillor Rotundo?
Through you to the mayor, Madam President, as he's here. Mr. Mayor, would it be better to just wait, what's the, you'll be sending a proposal to us in May, is it? Instead of having you just go through the redundancy of this, and unfortunately, I apologize, I forgot the scheduling process here, was it June, May, we end up coming up with a budget?
Madam President, through you to the councillor, we're on track, we should be able to present something to the council in May, a budget for '17. And if you allow me the time, councillor, I'll talk a little bit about the current '16 forecast, and then what I'd like to talk to the council about, maybe in regards to your motion, in presenting maybe a picture of '16, and some of those accounts that are running a little bit high, a lot of it is overtime. So what we do- So what we did when I took office, first week pretty much, was to look at the year-to-date spending as of December 31st. So through half of the fiscal year, take a look at exactly where we were at. And upon looking at that, kind of made a projection. So we did a little bit of a process that probably hasn't been done in the city before, but it's something that is done in a lot of different communities and at the state level. You know, you project out your current year, it helps inform your next fiscal year. So for '16, what we did was look at where we were, what our burn rate was for different accounts, and what we were looking at in terms of the spending that had happened through December 31st. With that, I, along with some city staff, made a projection on what we were looking at for the end of the year. Where were we going to end the year, given the current burn rate? Granted, some spending that happens in the city is front-loaded, and we took that into account. And we looked at the biggest area where, you know, was overtime, in terms of where we were spending a lot of money, a lot more money than what had been appropriated by the council. So because I think this is a new process, and I think what we're going to be doing is going forward, we're going to be doing this every year, and we're going to have probably quarterly check-ins, is what I'd like to do. But we wanted to do that half-year kind of check-in and then start to inform the next year. So that's why we were looking at approximately a $2 million gap for this year, and then for next year, I've asked departments to start to look at a 5% reduction.
So, Madam President, through you to the... So you're saying we have a $2 million deficit, yet the state certified that we had a balanced budget? And you said that we have a burn rate of a projection of $900,000. That's not a realized loss because it never occurred.
Right.
So you don't have a deficit, then?
We have a projected deficit.
No, you don't have a deficit.
You have a projected deficit, George.
So why would you allow... Why would you allow overtime if you know that's the case? Usually what Tom used to do is he would take whatever was in surplus and pay off whatever deficit he had. That's why I want to find out the excess in the accounts, because there are surpluses. I looked at the last four-year budgets, got them from Madam Clerk.
George, there are surpluses, okay? But the burn rate of certain accounts is what we took into account for the $2 million...
Where is the overtime coming from, Mr. Mayor? What departments?
I'll go through police, fire, DPW are the three biggest contributors to that.
And how many people... I mean, so at $900,000, you're talking literally... In a two-month period to go through that, you would have to have at least 100 people with a base salary of $75,000 or above, which isn't the base salary of the people here in the city. So where are you coming up with this burn rate statistic? Because now you're talking everybody, about 100 people, getting at the very least overtime every single week for the next two months. Why would you allow that, number one? Number two, how do you stop that when you have...
The projection was based on the current burn rate. The burn rate of the departments' overtime through December 31st.
Sure, so you're going on last year's burn rate based upon performance secondary to a snowstorm?
It's this year's burn rate.
Well, it's all within the same frame. It's all within the same 365-day process. So obviously, if you're using that methodology, the time in which you incur those losses based upon projected overtime, based upon past overtime practices during a blizzard, a tornado, and other inconveniences, it changes the statistic.
It wasn't through a blizzard, I don't believe. But what we can do, and what we're focused on, is looking at the overtime, managing the overtime. That burn rate isn't sustainable. So what we're doing, and what I've already outlined, is what we're doing is I'm getting weekly reports of overtime. We're trying to get justified overtime from the departments. This is the first time this has happened.
Which is perfect. And I'm with you on that.
So for the executive to really dig in and to say, "The current burn rate of overtime isn't sustainable. We're looking for justified overtime reports. We're looking for the backup to what is required based on that overtime." Why that overtime is required.
And to your credit, that hasn't taken place in well over 20 years. I mean, so, and not to mention the fact that you have to go through policy, procedure, job description, all the things that you have to do, that hasn't been done.
Correct.
I mean, you know, that's an institutional issue for over 20 years.
Right. And so we want to manage... At the end of the day, what I want to do is manage the overtime so that it's sustainable, so that we can have an accurate look at what is needed for manpower and for workload and what, you know, may be at the judgment of management. And it really does come down to a management issue. If management says, you know, overtime isn't needed unless it's for a public safety need, then that's kind of what we... Where we want to go.
And as you're bringing up the management question, because obviously, this is part and parcel of it. Obviously, you have a supervisory role, so doesn't the chief, so doesn't both chiefs.
Right.
So I beg to ask the question, and please, I apologize. How are they in a union?
How are they what?
How are they in a union if they're providing superv... I mean, do they have disciplinary roles?
That is a question we're currently going through with the outside labor council.
So I guess the question is, are they supervisors? So who's responsible for the budget? Because if you're...
I'm responsible for the budget at the end of the day. And that's how I'm managing this budget. And that's how I will be managing the budgets under my administration.
So by that theory, then, that doesn't make the managers, by the way?
What's that?
By that theory, underneath the Kentucky River decision, it does not make the managers. So once they're responsible for the budget...
Again, we're discussing with labor council what the roles of management and the roles of the union and how...
Hence the description.
How we can allow management the freedom to be able to manage things such as overtime. But at the end of the day, everything is my responsibility.
Right.
So even the burn rate, the overtime that has been allowed beginning January 5th to today is my... I can own that. But we're making headway in making it a justifiable and a more professional manner.
But at this point, you don't have $900,000 of deficit because you never burned it because you're stopping it.
Right, hopefully, hopefully. So that's... What we're saying is, there would be a $2 million budget without any more management. If I walked away and I didn't come back until June 30th, I would project that the city would be $2 million in rent.
Well, that's if you allowed your subordinance to run roughshod and have everybody pad their stuff.
Which they have been allowed up until December 31st.
Right.
So... But I look forward to having a more detailed conversation, having the numbers, and maybe we can go through them either in committee or however the council wants to decide to have that conversation. But I do look forward to kind of outlining...
But at this point, I applaud you. There's no deficit, and you're stopping it, and I applaud you for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you and Omar for being in attendance this evening. We do appreciate your input. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. Like Counselor Rotundo, I also want to applaud you for your efforts in just, what, 10 weeks that we've been here. I've seen a lot of things happening that I think are positive. It sort of has a semblance to what former Mayor Colella did many years ago. I can remember getting notifications from the mayor's office that, "Don't spend anything. No overtime. Don't purchase anything unless it's approved by this office." And Counselor Colella was very, yeah, very stringent with regard to that, making sure that the budgetary matters were adhered to. And I certainly want to, again, commend you and also your staff for the efforts you've made so far, and I feel very confident that this will continue down the road, and you certainly will have my support as that of my colleagues. I would hope that these efforts continue and that we work with you on that road. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just to follow up on that, and before anyone else heaps any more praise on me, this is my job. So I don't need to be praised for being a good manager, for trying to do the right thing, which is what I'm trying to do. So there's no need to thank me, or it's my job. It's the taxpayer money, and I want everyone to remember that. So it's not... I'm not here to get praise, while I appreciate it. Believe me, I do appreciate it. It's my job, and this is what I got elected to do, so.
Well, it is my money, and so I'm personally praising you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. I still have that motion, and I promise return the election. But that said, just to clarify two things, where are we right now with the stabilization fund? Do we got 5 million or 5.2 million in it?
5.8.
5.8 million?
5.8.
And the year before, FYI, '15 or '16, did we put 1.2 million, or was it 1.4 million to shore up the budget? Because I remember when Tom did it, he did it three times. We...
Counselor, just a point of information. This will be going to Ways and Means, so we can go further into the details of the motion in committee, because I believe that there are hundreds of questions we could ask.
I know, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, there hasn't been any deposit or expenses in the stabilization account for the last year, through last year.
So FYI, '15 was the last time.
'15 was the last time, and I think we used 2.5 million in stabilization to plug the budget. And then I think even with '16, there was another 2.5 that was appropriated, an allowance of 2.5 million that was voted on by the council with the acceptance of the fiscal year '16 budget.